End of session from our February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting where we recessed until February the eighteenth at five thirty, but we canceled that meeting due to weather. So I'll now adjourn that session and call us back to order for our February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the West County Board of Supervisors. Note, we do have a quorum with all members present except for Ms. Lawson. This evening, we have Bishop Warren Gwynne of the Church of the Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints to provide invocation. If you would please rise and remain standing for the pledge. Bishop?
Our Heavenly Father, we come before Thee today with gratitude in our hearts. We are grateful for the beautiful weather today. We're grateful for our ability to serve. We're grateful for our good leaders in this county. We're grateful for their willingness to serve us. We pray that at this meeting tonight, Thy Spirit would be with us, that we will be led and guided, and we will think the thoughts Thou would have us think and come to agreement with the sensitive matters in this meeting tonight. We're grateful for Thy love. We're grateful for Thy Savior in our lives and for all the things that Thou does for us. We're grateful for these many blessings, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is Citizens Time. We do not have anybody signed up for Citizens Time. Does anybody want to speak? Got here late. Seeing no one, I will close Citizens Time before we move on. We'll recognize two of our regular attendees, Mr. Gus Kenter, who just celebrated a birthday, and I believe Ms. Linda Myers has a birthday coming up.
Oh, no, never, never.
Allegedly has a birthday.
Allegedly.
Next item on the agenda is payment of invoices. I'll entertain a motion to pay the invoices as presented. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any questions, discussion, or any invoice that any member wants to pull out. Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of our previous meeting from February the ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. Entertain a motion to approve those.
Aye.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
I would like that motion to be approved as amended in front. You had it already.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as amended. Any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr.
Longmont Terry.
Terry, I'm sorry. Aye.
I abstain, I wasn't here.
Talk about birthdays and getting older.
It only gets better with age.
Yeah, you're right. Next item is old business. The first one is our amendment to the Rules of Procedure, two thousand and twenty-one. Mr. Bear, I believe you proffered that, if you want to do it again.
Mr. Chairman, I've laid this into the procedure for five point three one on page four. State here is to ask for a letter stating emergency from the Governor and then practically an unsafe report. The board assemble in one location, and the board may conduct its meetings while ensuring the continuity of government. This was on your last agenda, which did indeed brought up the next agenda. I would request that Chairman, you approve the amended Rules of Procedure.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Aye.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Aye.
So approved. Anything else under old business, Mr. Bear?
I have nothing else.
Moving on with the agenda, the reports, our first report. Ms. Gwynne, treasurer. Weren't you at the last meeting?
I don't know. Actually, just realized last night that tonight was the second meeting night, and I don't know, I've been ready for February to end since it started, but it's gone fast, thank goodness. So, Mr. Smith, good to see you back with us.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't have as much for you as I did last time. I feel like I'm yelling at you all, Emma. I'm sorry.
Were you?
If I was at home, I would, you know, understand that comment, but I'll take offense In front of you have the financial report that was sent out in your board packet for tonight, and you'll notice that the consolidated account shows a balance of seventy-one million, seven hundred thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, and the general fund balance is comprised of forty-eight thousand, nine hundred, excuse me, forty-eight million, not thousand, forty-eight million, nine hundred forty-two thousand and twenty-four dollars. So those balances are an increase over December, and I'll attribute a lot of that just to the fact of our final tax collections through January, as I had mentioned last month, because we were finishing up on getting payments in. So I think that's why you see the, kind of the significant increase for January. But that's all that I have for you tonight. I don't have any updates, other than we're just continuing to work along and getting ready to send out delinquent notices. Those will go out in March and be to our taxpayers around April first, give or take a day or two, depending on how the printers can get those out. So that's kind of what I have going on between now and next month. Folks are starting to get income tax refunds, so they're starting to come in and pay on their two thousand and twenty taxes or prior years if owed. One other thing, I said I didn't have much for you, but I'm going to take that remark back. I have been sending, as I've noted before, parcels out to the collection attorneys to collect delinquent real estate taxes. The notice that was published with Phil Enterprise back in January, I had shared it on Facebook on, I think it was like February the eleventh, because they had a deadline of the twelfth to establish payment plans before the proceedings progressed to the legal side as far as through the court process, and that generated a day's worth of phone calls and questions. And we have a lot of people that have contacted the attorneys. They're, they've either paid the parcels in full or setting up payment plans. I'm trying to send parcels out at least on about every two weeks or so. It kind of varies, but right now, they have about, about four hundred thousand dollars in real estate taxes that they are working on collecting, and that doesn't count what I have yet to send out. So I have a long ways to go before I get there, but just to make you all aware of kind of that going on. As I've mentioned before, a lot of folks feel like it's not fair, but two bills per year notifying you that you have delinquent real estate taxes, I feel like is more than sufficient. So when you owe two to ten or fifteen years, regardless of the balance that's due, sometimes we just have to take other measures. But that's all I have for you guys tonight. Do you all have any questions on anything?
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Gwynne? And I've got one, I know we talked about this a little bit in the budget meeting, but the dog tags with working with vets that are interested in, is that something worth looking into?
We could. See if they'd be interested in doing it.
I mean, if you just put some, and I know it's a voluntary thing if the vets want to deal with it, and I don't know if they'd make a dollar or whatever normally is, you know?
Yeah, as I mentioned in our revenue session last week, Pilaski County has a, has an agreement with their vet offices, and what they do is if the vets sell a dog tag for the county, that way it's kind of a one-stop shop for the dog owner. They're coming to the vet, they're getting the rabies vaccination, then go ahead and purchase their tag. They give a dollar to the vet's office for each tag that they sell. I think we would have pretty good cooperation here in West County. All the vets are really good about sending in their vaccination records with the exception of one, and as I noted, we do have issues. I have to send a letter about every three months, reminding them that they are in violation of state code, and Commonwealth's Attorney's Office could press charges if need be, because they are not complying with sending in the vaccination records. So we do struggle to get those in. I would anticipate that that office probably would not participate, but it leads me to other concerns if they chose to, but that would be a bridge we would have to cross at that point if they decided to participate. But I think for the most part, our vet offices here would probably be more than willing to participate in that, but it may be a fact of asking, and they may say, no, I don't want to have to deal with the extra hassle of doing that. It's just...
Well, and I was just thinking, and I hate to, I'm like you, the one-stop-shop deal, and that was a person that asked me about it, and I thought maybe during your slow season, might just kind of put some fillers out there and see what kind of response you get.
Yeah, and two, of course, we're still on our old dog tag system, which is also the old tax system. I'm still waiting to get that program from UNIS. The previous IT director had told me back when we were in the process of changing over that that system would have to be built from the ground up, that our, our current system was just so full of data and, and information that just really doesn't need to convolute a new system at all, that we would need to just enter everything in from the ground up. So I would like to be able to get that program in so that we can get started and kind of better be able to track a lot of the dog tags, because right now, Animal Control can call and ask for information, and if the person has bought a new tag since the last one was issued, we don't have any way to keep the old information, because it just keeps, just filling up the data file for that person, and you, you may have to scroll down through twenty-five records to get there, and the system is a homegrown nineteen eighty, probably three, four system to tell you what we're dealing with. So hoping we can get to animal licenses at some point soon, that we can have better records with that, and we can track everything a little bit better instead of stirring everybody up like I did this past year, but everybody got upset over, like I said, they've got upset over a dog, but they haven't gotten upset because I've turned their taxes over for collections, and they could lose their house if they don't pay the taxes. So I don't quite understand, but I guess that's to each their own.
Does anybody else have anything for Ms. Gwynne?
And I'll just comment, just we had a good meeting on revenue, we're glad to talk about that. For the year, our lodging is still down twenty-four thousand dollars from this time last year, and our meals are still down how many, thirty-seven thousand dollars from this time last year. On a positive note, January numbers were actually above last January numbers in those meals and lodging. Now, this way, it could look and say to me that lodging was the back taxes being paid and caught up. It may not be all good news, but at least on our report, it's beginning to look like meals and lodging is starting to come back around. So it's pretty good.
And we did have a few lodging tax payments that were mixed in with the tax payments that we missed pulling out, because we were trying to sort the mail as it was coming in to find other miscellaneous payments. So in January, we did find some lodging tax payments that got posted in January that should have been December, so that'll kind of offset December and January there a little bit. But another project, speaking of lodging tax, that I want to get started on, and Ms. Walt and I had talked about a little bit this past summer, and then I've kind of researched here or there, just haven't taken the time to dive into it, but we have several properties and just doing a little bit of preliminary research, that if you go to Airbnb or Verbo or any of these, you can rent a little, what I'll call a utility building down along the river for the night or for the week or whatever. A lot of those are not paying lodging tax to us, so I'm going to start researching, trying to locate those, find ownership, and try to get information out of those folks so that we can be sure we start collecting the lodging tax there as well, because I have a feeling we're missing out on quite a bit.
On your way down there, can you stop and buy a biscuit?
Sure. I checked one of our county restaurants today, and they're, they're charging the correct amount, but as I mentioned in the revenue meeting the other day, if they're not charging it, that's not entirely our problem. I feel like as far as the meal tax is concerned, as long as they're paying the correct percentage, that's what counts. If they choose to absorb it, then they choose to absorb it. Just don't ask me to go test out all the lodging places, please. I was afraid that was going to be the request the other day.
You're up next, Ms. Kathy.
I just wanted to say there's been a surge in people paying their meals tax at the new rate, so they are...
You can come on up, you're next on the agenda.
I don't know if they're doing it at the cash register, but they're, they're paying what they're supposed to, so. We've got about forty, and sixteen of them have paid so far. A lot of them are saying that it's the mail. I don't know if, I know that my daughter got a Christmas card a couple of weeks ago that was postmarked before Christmas, so maybe that's true.
Well, my personal experience, the mail is a valid excuse right now.
Yeah, but the ones that are paying, like I said, I don't know if they're doing it at the cash register, but they are paying the new rate, so that's a good thing.
Any other good news?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Yeah, it's, it's over your report.
Can I give you all a copy? I know some of you have already seen it.
It's in their board packet, it's already...
Yeah, we've got it.
So what, what do you want me to say? Or any questions that you have, I'll try to answer them.
Basically, what I look at is, is your first green line is the total assessed value, the next green line is tax led in two thousand and twenty. Right past that line is the increase over the, this is basically the real estate as of January first, two thousand and twenty, not January first, two thousand and twenty-one, that's January first, two thousand and twenty. So as you can see, real estate has increased in value with taxable amount of a hundred and six thousand dollars. Personal property has increased a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. So keep in mind, this is all being up through January first, two thousand and twenty. So two thousand and nineteen, this has been a good year for upgrade on some features. Machinery and tools, an increase of a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Eligible on mobile homes and a merchant capital increase of forty-four thousand. And when you go to public service, at the bottom there, I thought it was two thousand and twenty...
Twenty-six hundred.
That is probably the smallest increase we've had in, in public services in some time, but we've been blessed to have upgrades in Jackson Ferry substations and new lines built throughout the counties. There's been a lot of these increases, but you can see that in the total increase, it's about a two percent increase over the tax led in two thousand and nineteen. Not as high as what we would ideally like it, but it's actually better than what we've been seeing in some of our more recent, so basically, our January first, two thousand and twenty values, we've got two percent higher than January two thousand and nineteen. Down at the bottom is all the information goes with it, growth rates, tax, and then obviously, our deferrals, the real estate, the veterans credit, and the land use deferral that come off of our...
And you mentioned it, or I think you mentioned it, but they're, they're currently doing reassessment.
Yes, that'll go into effect in January of twenty-two.
And for people to get their news off of social media, we're just to clarify a few things. We're required by law every so many years to do a reassessment.
Right.
It's not a tool to raise taxes. They did do a reassessment, they come back, and then we decide what to do about the tax rate.
Right, it, it should be on the values, not, not to raise taxes, but to get everything at market value.
I just wanted to clarify for all the social media users, it has nothing to do with raising taxes. If it did, I wouldn't have put a new roof on my house like this. I'm anxiously waiting that, but I just, there was some misinformation out there about that's what was behind it, and I just wanted to clarify that, so.
I hope not.
I love taxes just as much as everybody is.
That's right.
Does anybody else have anything for Ms. Walt? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Building grounds met on February sixteenth and made supplying recommendations, authorized the building grounds department to make necessary heater repairs at the Appalachian Regional Expo Center contingent. The Apex Authority pays for the supply. Mr. Bear, you want to explain that one?
Yeah, the, what they're looking at doing out there, the heaters are installed as part of design. The design does not take into account the amount of dust that is coming into the heaters in the process, so they're looking at adding filters and also probably to have outside air into them and looking at reactivating the heaters. The contractor has agreed to provide a lift to assist with, been able to go up and get the heaters and relocate them, and they're going to relocate them in an area where they don't have to worry about having a lift in the future to get up and do changing out of the filter, and also put where the infrared heat is coming down on the concrete and disseminated heat is not coming down on the aluminum bleachers, which is then disseminating heat too fast and not really heating the building. The Apex Authority met last week following the building grounds committee, and they have incurred with buying the necessary supplies for...
Coming from committee that doesn't need a second, any questions or discussions?
Is these the heaters that they installed over the doors?
No, these are the heaters that are rolling.
Okay.
Anybody else? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Also amending the progress park grazing lease agreement to add lot twenty for an annual payment of two thousand three hundred sixty dollars. The round rate was calculated by the per acre price of current lease times the acreage of lot twenty.
Mr. Bear, you want to add anything to that?
Lot twenty is a lot that we just acquired back from Brentwood and just adding it to the lease as the same rate as everything.
Coming from committee that doesn't need a second, any questions or discussion?
Yeah, yeah. Did, did that lot go to the same that leads to rest of?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Anybody else? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved. Is that all from Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Coop?
That is all.
Next item on the agenda is new business. We have the consent counter that's before you. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Make a motion. Second it. Go ahead.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions about the consent counter? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item is the Gov Deal Surplus Auctions. Ms. Collins?
I've got less than the vehicles that are auctioning down deals.
Entertain a motion to approve the bids as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a, I have one question on the, like the two thousand and thirteen Ford Taurus.
Yes, sir.
It's like bringing twenty-five hundred bucks at auction, just kind of food for thought. I reached out to the Sheriff's Department, and the Sheriff's Department's willing to work this out if it's something that can be done. What if we take these surplus Tauruses and get them at our schools where they don't have a county presence, law enforcement vehicle there, like the middle schools and elementary schools? I know there's resource officers in there, but having a car in a parking lot, I think, may be a much better investment than the twenty-five hundred bucks to send it on down the road, and the sheriff's agreement to that after discussion with those, with those folks. Is that something we could maybe look at doing? I think it'd go a long way, especially this day and age, if we had a law enforcement car parked at each school system in the county.
I'll open the floor up for discussion. Of course, I'm conflicted out because it's the sheriff's office, and I don't know if Chief Deputy Foster, if you want to come up and...
We have somewhere between six and eight of those that's over on Sixth Street. Now, two of them's currently being driven, one young man's driving them to the, one that's being driven to the academy, and another boy who's a law enforcement officer's bringing his to the courthouse right now because his basic school doesn't start till July, so you've probably got between six or eight of those. Two of them are inoperable, they're not going to do any good, probably at all. The other six probably will help you out quite a bit. As far as I know, they run good, they look pretty good.
Do you talk about the officers driving them every day, or just sitting?
Maybe a combination of both for the guys that can drive and have been through the, through the course to drive them, and then the others leave and park there. It's food for thought, I know a lot of people, they like seeing the cop cars at the schools, it gives a little more sense of security to them. The sheriff said those cars were purchased out of the PAF, said they would be donating those cars back. They're the ones that was giving up the money, and they were in agreement to do that if we wanted to consider doing it.
The other end of life, as far as we're concerned, it was just going to be a matter of time. Through the carizate and stuff, I was going to write you a letter about it, so.
Would we, so we've got to still keep insurance on the vehicles for them to run it and the expenses on the vehicles, so can that still come out of the PAF process, how would we work that?
That's something we would probably have to sit down and discuss, I don't know. Like I said, as far as maintenance on, you probably would just have oil changes and gasoline, as far as I know. The majority of these, if they were given to a resource officer, they're probably not going to be running more than two miles a day, probably. Most of these guys live pretty close to where they work. The only exception that you would have would be Jackson, because we haven't got a person to fill that position yet that I know of, and we've, the county, the board actually bought the two SUVs through the, for the school resource officer program. We just got those marked, we've got them, one's in front of Fort Chisel, one's in front of Roar Tree, and then we have a Dodge Charger, it's relatively real new, it's going to be at George Lee High School, so. All the full-time guys who are at the high schools already have good vehicles. I predict you're probably seven to ten years from buying another SRO vehicle, because these just aren't ran and treated like regular police cars, they're not going fast, they're not steadily idling, so...
So seven to ten years, I'm sorry, Mr. Farley, seven to ten years using the current vehicles that you're talking about?
On all your SRO program, yeah. I would, I can't see that any problem with them not lasting that long. Two or three of those guys do work patrol in the summertime, but you're only using them on the road two or three months out of the year, so.
If one consider, we could just not declare this a surplus and leave it on there for a while, and then maybe get an inventory of all of these vehicles that you got across over mileage, what's wrong with them, and then put it on the budget committee for them to look at and decide, go to the pros and cons of doing that and see what a little bit of moving up.
And Mr. Farley can throw something at me if I'm wrong, but this is not benefiting the sheriff's office, I just want to throw this out here. The school board is paying for the maintenance and the gas on the full-time ones. This might be a discussion we need to have with them, if they can carry that. You know, what you were talking about, afford the money for the gas and, you know...
It sounds to me like the sheriff has five or six cars that might fit that mold, maybe not this one. I don't know if you're saying to just pull this one off or let it go, I'm not sure what you're asking, Mr. Terry. I thought you were saying let this one go, and then the one to come up in the future where you work, work for the school.
And I'm good either way, I just, I saw the price, and I'm thinking, you know, twenty-five hundred bucks, that's why I talked to the sheriffs, because it was, it's their money. And I'm good either way, I just, I saw the price and I'm thinking, you know, twenty-five hundred bucks, that's why I talked to the sheriffs, because it was, it's their money that they would be, that they would be giving up and they're willing to do it, they thought it was a pretty good idea. So we wouldn't necessarily know if this has gotta be sold, but for any of the future ones that's out there ready to go, maybe we look at doing something else with those.
I think you withdraw it if you want to, but it sounds like you have five or six cars ready to surplus out.
Yeah, it's not gonna be very long at all. As far as ones sold on Gov Deals, I don't know if that person's already committed or not, you probably can't get that one back anyway, uh, I don't know how that works. Yeah, I, like I said, we've got plenty to replenish what you're asking for, if that's around what you want to get.
I'm fine with that.
But I will definitely get an inventory of them like Stephen recommended, probably let you know what the ins and outs of them are, best of my ability to let you know. Talk to the guys who are driving them.
Does anybody else having questions or discussion?
No, I mean, just a comment, if, if Chief Deputy Foster knows that they got some more in, um, the pipeline there, I think the cleanest thing to do would just go ahead and approve this one and let it go. That would probably be the, the cleanest thing.
And Chairman, I, uh, obviously the two thousand and twelve Dodge Amulons, we, the funds coming from that aside go towards the forty thousand, uh, that we just agreed to let mine rest. Uh, the two fire trucks, um, and also the, the two thousand and seventy Connor line, that may have been an old Witten County.
It was.
Apply that towards, um, the, the new ones, the, uh, two fire trucks that were sold, we can just take those and put them into the fire truck reserve or let them buy trucks in the. And then, uh, with PAF, look at those, gonna make the PAF.
Mr. McCRoberts, you didn't wanna pull that Dodge Amulons, you wanna let it go?
Nah, I don't think you'll go, we've been around here.
Does anybody else have any questions or discussion? Here and now we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Aye.
Albstein?
Eh.
Aye.
Aye.
So approved. Hope they're happy with their purchases. We offer a fifty-fifty warranty, if they break in half, they get both parts. Um, next item on the agenda is a sheriff transfer request, Mr. Chief Deputy Foster, I don't know if you wanna stay up here or not.
I can.
The budget committee sent us with, with the sheriff, what they, they've got money available, why they wanted to lay it for budget committee, I think y'all were okay with that, but still pretty important, that goes budget, if you want to, it looks pretty straightforward to me.
Uh, first one's a transfer of nine ninety-two eighty-one from Electronic Summons to the PAF. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry?
Aye.
Aye.
Eh.
Albstein?
Aye.
Aye.
So approved. The second one is a request, transfer of sixty-five thousand from Concealed Weapons Permit to the PAF. Amendment appropriate the same to motor vehicles and equipment. Purpose of this transfer is to offset the expense for two twenty-twenty-one Chevrolet Silverados and equipment.
Moved.
Have a motion to approve, have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
And after following up with the sheriff's office, the, the lease payment is not very clear with that, but this is the same thing they were mentioning with the prepaid lease on this, like we did the other vehicles. Um, and I would just request that you all include in your motion, the, the authorization from the sheriff to do the, buy the prepaid lease.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add that to the motion.
Have amended motion, have a second.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion?
I got a question, just for curiosity. The sixty-five thousand from Concealed Weapons, how, how long of a period has that been building up from?
This year was a very good year.
Yeah, I know, that's recent.
And I anticipate future years being very good years, but you're probably looking at around two years on that, just as an educated guess.
Oh, okay.
I think that they used a Starman heater, July one, I think July one of twenty seventeen, I don't think it was twenty sixteen, I think it was twenty seventeen that the sheriff added the thirty-five dollars on, so he's thinking he was alone.
Okay. I was just curious, I mean, I was, I didn't know if we had done this.
With more actors.
I didn't know if we had done this like in the past, you know, and if it was like six months worth or, I thought, my gosh, there's a lot of concealed carry permits out there if it's six months.
I remember another vehicle that.
Yeah, it was a Durango, we bought a Durango out of that same fund. And, uh, since then, it's, uh, it's back towards that now for us to be able to replace two more that's fallen down around us pretty much.
We're currently including, well, over a hundred thousand dollars of what we reported selling in January of eighteen, it was thirty-seven thousand dollars. And there was a, I don't remember what come out of it.
I was just curious.
Any other questions or discussion? Here and now we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Albstein, sorry.
Eh.
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 So approved, why don't you need to buy them or something like? Anything else on that? No, thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Next item is staff reports, county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, first item on there is informational purposes, uh, VDOT is doing a transportation planning work for exit seventy-four and exit eighty interchange. Um, this is the, uh, project website is on there, uh, we are looking to get that shared on our websites, just so people have that. Uh, county engineer Kinsler, uh, has regularly been attending meetings with them, uh, and they are just trying to come up with alternatives to handle the traffic in both of those areas. We know the issues that are there and I think everything is on the table, you know. Ground bounce, the dog, bugs, uh, everything else.
And they're gonna fix it this time.
Hopefully the traffic lights at exit eighty is, is on there, because they're ridiculous.
Disaster.
They realize they don't, they don't function well. The, the whole thing is studied, it's, you know, they'll have to come up with a recommendation whether it's moving ramps or moving things, so. It, it's needed, uh, it continues to be problems, uh, but we need to actively be involved with it, we need to be looking out for our interest, the county interest and the traveling interest. Just informational purposes, uh, if anybody wants to, to set in on anything or wanting to be more involved, let us have a, a, a. Next item is sort of informational also, the New River Regional Water Authority, uh, is, uh, applying for a reissuance of their withdrawal permit. Currently, we are permitted for ten million gallons. When I say we, the New River Regional Water Authority permitted for, uh, ten million gallons. The, we feel it's critical to keep that level there, uh, you all seen industrial prospects we talked about recently that are looking at hot water usage? Um, you know, the, uh, the plant is not producing that much now, but we don't wanna get in a situation where we get backed down on a permit and, and that probably's in the future, meaning the following. So, I would request, uh, that the board authorize the, uh, chairman, sign the letter that we send to BEQ in support of this reissuance and support of that of the twelve-ten million withdrawal.
I'll make that motion. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Here and now we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Aye.
Eh.
Eh.
Aye.
So approved.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, is, uh, just the memorandum of agreement, uh, we had done a previous amendment, uh, with the town, with Phil, uh, for the Agina Care House Call, um, they had some concerns with it, they came back with some other things, we took those off of them, basically went to three points. The most important point is, point number two, is that such approval of General Care of operations does not need to be in violation of the terms of emergency services agreement. So, county attorney has worked with, uh, us one, has worked with the town and I would recommend that you all approve just the memorandum of agreement.
Entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Got it.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Here and now we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry?
Aye.
Aye.
Eh.
Aye.
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 So approved, anything else, Mr. Bear?
Last item I've got, handed out in front of you, uh, I have a memo in there about the proposed cigarette tax. What is in front of you is a, uh, proposal agreement modeled after the Northern Virginia Cigarette Tax Board that I previously sent to you. Um, the, we are using Mount Rogers as the main catalyst of this, Sam Zanderson Mark, Sam, I don't know if you're familiar.
Sam Zanderson.
I'm sure, yes.
Sam Zanderson Law Firm, uh, is working on behalf of Mount Rogers, uh, on, uh, basically with all county administrators on preparing, uh, this agreement. Uh, basically this agreement just basically states that, and, and, and this is the draft, I mean, this is all of the, the individuals that we think might be involved, this is not to say they all will be, I have met with the town's Roar Tree, they have shown interest. I have discussed with the town manager, they currently have a pact, uh, they may not wanna come on board, they may wanna come on board. Uh, the, the legislation that was pending, um, that was called not having ten members and went to six members, went to no members as our regional board, but it's highly encouraged to be part of a regional board. So, um, this document is going out to all the localities, just to look at and see. But basically, what it establishes is membership, if you elect to be a member of it, then the board will be made up of a chief administrative officer of each locality or his or her designated. Um, they'll, you know, elect their chair, vice chair and then their, their powers are basically part of the staff, staff for the collection and enforcement of cigarette taxes. The cost, and Mr. Cook brought this up last time, um, they will collect the cigarette tax, the disbursement of the receipts and the management of funds. All expenses will be shared among all entities based on the number of packs sold in that entity, of, in the entire map. So, if we sold fifty percent of the cigarettes in all of the counties and towns around here, we're paying fifty percent of the cost. If we sell twenty percent, we're paying twenty percent of the cost. But this puts the enforcement and the oversight and the reporting from the state tax authority in, in their hands to be able to have all that information. Um, and then all the receipts beyond, beyond that get dispersed to the locality based on the number of packs sold and the tax rate within that locality. Most localities are talking about going for the same tax rate, it just makes everything cleaner and process, it keeps them competition among the locals. And, and, and implementation of this does not implement the tax, it just starts the process of creating the Mount Rogers Tax, um, Board. That board can then go into the state and work on getting a dual stamp, I think I showed y'all an example last time or before of what the dual stamp looks like. Basically, we would go to the state, get through a board dual stamp and have it for any of the localities that are members of this organization. You don't have to create your own, the state would produce that stamp, send it out to the wholesalers, we give you a report of which wholesalers they send it to. The wholesalers would then give you the report that says, we shipped this many carted cigarettes to store A and this many to store B and this many to store C. And that is what the enforcement person would go out and do. So, our steps, what we would need to take would be, um, agree to join the cigarette tax board. Um, and that would require an ordinance, we would need to hold a public hearing for the adoption of an ordinance saying that with family wishes to be a part of the cigarette tax board and authorizing a designated sign to enter into the agreement. And then following that, they step down the road and each locality has to do that. Each locality would then need to be considering ordinance to implement a cigarette tax at that point, uh, if they so chose to implement.
I have a question.
Yes.
How many peoples gonna be going to check out for that?
Uh, the proposal for the number of employees in, in the Northern Virginia Cigarette Tax Board, they have five people on staff, all the same fifteen hundred retail. We do not see us needing more than, the proposal right now is one full-time person and one part-time person to do this job for our area. So instead of us having to hire a part-time person or a full-time person in Lori's office and land on the same thing or assign it that way, we would just have all the counties in the Mount Rogers area and cities and towns that are involved in it, pretty much just paying for probably one and a half.
I, I just wondered if these ten people gone check out, it was used to have it. Thank you.
So do you need any action from us?
Right now, my recommendation would be, uh, if you all would be deciding that public hearing for March twenty-sixth to consider an ordinance to enter into this, uh, agreement. I'm sorry, twenty-third, March twenty-third.
Entertain a motion to set a public, to set the public hearing for March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one.
Make that motion.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? So set. Anything else, Mr. Bear?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hankins, do you have anything?
Just by leaving here for major purposes, I'm going to, perhaps, um, question for those, um, question for all the agencies or, um. Potential partners for the broadband, uh, fixed wireless, um, that process is probably a three to four month process for them to submit, for us to review, look at the technology and then, uh, enter into an agreement, so, um, we'll be looking at that, trying to get it out over the next week. Uh, we also, um, are still searching for a public information officer. We made an offer, but, um, a person accepted a higher paying position with the organization they're in now, so, um, but we will continue our search for a P I.
And I believe, um, the, the House and the Senate budget both include broadband expansion monies.
We're, we're expecting, uh, and actually have in the proposal that, um, folks that partner with us will help us to go after those funds.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else have any questions, Mr. Hankins? Moving on to county attorney, Mr. Farthing?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything to report at this time unless anyone has questions for me.
Board of Supervisor time, Mr. Terry?
I don't have anything at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Horne?
I don't have anything at this time, because the only thing I was gonna say is, when I left Spiegel, they were sweeping the roads, so they are trying to keep the mud out of it.
Anything else, Mr. Horne?
That's it.
Mr. McCRoberts?
The trash it, Foster phone?
Yes. Um. There are, there's about four places that have been looked at and I don't remember, I, I got enough things from Mr. Dunkford yesterday. There is either a summons been issued on that one or there's, they're trying to post, they've issued a summons, but that may be the one, and I, I will send you an email tomorrow to confirm with you, there's a couple of them have cart dates already set up in March on the list.
That the one that goes down the Baker's Ave? Okay. Okay.
Uh, Adams one as well, uh, I don't know which district that is, Adams one, um, Miss Gwen actually has that property on her tax lift to sell for, um, non-paying the taxes, but, uh, we are going to add additional funds on that one as well. I don't think he, the owner is living there anymore, think another county that was trying to work out with that county to get some of the issues, to get insurance for it.
So I have, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Coop?
Can you give me an update on where we stand with getting the, uh, people at the green boxes, protective equipment for handling people's garbage with needles and stuff in it?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mowers, uh, I discussed with Mr. Mowers, he was going.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mowers, uh, I discussed with Mr. Mowers, he was going to talk with Mr. Moore, uh, about the personal protective equipment that they provide and if there's anything that we needed to provide for COVID that we've been providing to them, we would provide that to them. So they, Mr. Moore, uh, the, the owner of the company is one that does provide that. We do provide the COVID stuff. He has talked to him about it.
I love that one.
Thank you, Mr. Smith?
Uh, just my wife and I would like to thank everybody for their prayers and support during the time that we're facing right now. We just ask that everybody continue to pray for us.
You definitely got that, brother. Um, I know we're trying to set a record tonight, uh, so there's always that one. Uh, Martha, thank you for the Gov. deals thing. I know that's a pain, but you do a good job. Um, and I had a road concern. Mr. Bear jumped on it, um, and, and took care of it and got back to the citizen. He, you know, he was tickled to death. Um, I got a call and this is a weird situation. It was, the call I got was from somebody that lived in my district about a water problem. Somebody lived in, uh...
My district.
Jean's district. And it was, I, I've never heard of a situation like this. The, the landowner was in jail and it was, um, but Mr. Bear, thank you and Ms. Nguyen. I don't know if the water committee needs to look at, you know, when somebody's incarcerated, it's way too hard to get water turned on in West County. And I know Mr. Farthing has got a piece in that, but that's something the water committee might want to look at i- if there's, now that we've been through it once, it might not ever happen for another hundred years. I mean, I joke about the speed of government, but I know y'all done it this quickly. It was, it was, it was really impressive.
I was going to say, I was, I was impressed at how fast they got it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I, it really was, but...
I'm just glad it worked out.
Yeah.
If it work wasn't signed, it got really open, uh, and, and unfortunately we're bound by state code that says we can't turn the water on until the owner signs for them to turn water on. And that way, if Mr. Terry owns the property, I can't turn the water on for Jean until Mr. Terry says, well, maybe he doesn't want him to have the water turned on. So it fortunately worked out well. Uh, staff was able to get everything lined up, the status of the New River Valley Regional Jail, helps us, so, uh, it let it work out. Appreciate it.
Which regional jail leads into my next thing, this tra, we got to get this trash pickup back. We, I mean, it is horrible. I don't know, and I know it involves chief deputy, but I'm not sure if we shouldn't start advertising for employee, the next jail meeting, board meeting I go to, I'm going to ask, you know, when we can get the trustees back out here because it's, I mean, y'all ride around the county, y'all know what it looks like, so, um, if they're all together, I think, I mean, I, I understood the, the cautiousness and, you know, what COVID could cost the localities when, at first, but, you know, it's starting to die down. I think they can let these guys out. You know, I'm sure they want some sunshine, so I don't know if we want to try to start hiring somebody now or, or what, but, um, it's, um, and... Chief Deputy, did you say there was a inmate trash crew from one of the correctional centers? Was it Marion, Bland, River North?
I can't remember right off.
One of, one of the three actually has, uh, inmate work crew and we need to, if we could, reach out to them and see if they can, until we can get something. I know the Boy Scouts in the retreat have been picking up and, of course, the weather's not been great, but, um, that's definitely a program you didn't realize how much they done until it was gone, so. But that's all I've got. Uh, anybody else have anything? Not will be in recess until Thursday, February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one at five-thirty PM.[1797.33]